Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Arvada City Council Meeting for today, Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Rupert.
Hello.
It's nice to see everybody. It's been a few weeks since we've had all, everybody together, so it's a pleasure to see everybody today. All right, with that, we have two workshops this evening. The first is going to be our Metro Water Recovery. And I believe we have an individual from the Metro Water Recovery team with us today. If you could introduce yourself with a name and address, and then we look forward to the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Mickey Conway. I'm the CEO of Metro Water Recovery. And here today to talk about what we do at Metro Water Recovery, our partnership with Arvada and 60 other entities around the region, and talk about some exciting things that we have in front of us in terms of protecting public health and the environment. So I really appreciate your time and appreciate the invite tonight. Also, this is intended really to be a conversation, so stop me at any time, ask questions, and hopefully I can hear, you know, what's on your mind and what's most important to you all. So, as I said, we are Metro Water Recovery. We are wastewater and resource recovery, basically wastewater treatment facility in the Denver metro area. A couple of years ago, we rebranded, and our tagline we created was called "We Get Your Water." And it's a little bit of a cheeky two-way thing here. We do literally receive your water, of course. All the water that is used in homes and businesses and industrial establishments comes, throws, flows through there, goes into pipes that are locally owned and operated, as they are in Arvada, and they meet our interceptor system. We've got about 200 miles of interceptor system in our 800 square mile area, comes to our facilities, and we treat that water, recover resources from it, put that water back into the South Flat River. So that's our job. So we get that water every single day from all of our constituents, our partners. We also have a staff of about 500 people who we believe are the best in the business, and they understand this stuff. They live it, they are crazy about protecting public health and the environment, this is what they live for, and so we get your water. We understand it as well. So we, we think this kind of describes, really a good way to describe our mission, which is protect the public health environment by cleaning water and recovering resources. So I'll talk a little bit about, big picture, who we are, with the, the service areas, you can see on here, is about 850 square miles in the metro area. As high, far north is Fort Lupton, far south is the Cherry Creek area, western, you know, aside all the way up kind of to the mountain, fringe of the foothills there, and the east, Aurora, which is expanding perhaps out to Kansas at some day. So we're really, you got a big chunk there. It's about 2.2 million people that we serve, and those people are all represented by 60-plus local governments, either water and sand districts or municipalities, that make up our partnership. And that is really what Metro is. It's a partnership. Folks who got together back in the early 1960s to say, "We could do this together better than we can separately," and so we, we value all the members and our partners and all the input they give us, and we do this for each other. We all, it's an excellent example of regional cooperation. It's been very successful for over 60 years. We treat about 140 million gallons of wastewater every single day at our two plants, one in Commerce City, just basically due east of here, and one up in Brighton, what's called our Northern Treatment Plant, which started off as a little plant, and now is one of our third or fourth biggest plant in the state. So our, our facilities are growing, as you can imagine, with the metro area growing the way it is. And since 1961, we have invested billions of dollars, we collectively have invested this amount of money in order to protect public health and the environment, and have made an incredible increase in public health and in cleaning of the South Flat River. So we're very, very proud of that work. So what we do, this is just a bit of a schematic of what happens at the plant, as you all know, and I kind of alluded to this. Before the wastewater gets to the plant, it's carried through our interceptor system, as I said, a couple hundred miles of pipes there. Then they make it to one of our two treatment plants. At that point, we have a, you know, high-level schematic of how wastewater works. And basically what it does, the wastewater treatment plant will separate water and solids. That's, that's the big job to do first. So at the, the beginning of this, of the process, you have bar screens, things that filter out trash and things that can downstream damage our equipment, or be difficult to, to deal with in terms of treatment. Those are hauled off to landfills, all that, all that stuff. And we find some pretty interesting stuff in the wastewater, as you can imagine. We have a little museum in our transmissions department that's got stuff in there that is probably some stuff you'd expect and some stuff you wouldn't. So we, our social media team has a, kind of a field day with that. After we go through that primary process, we go into something called the Primary Clarification. Those are big, big round vats that you see where solids settle to the bottom, water, the liquids stay at the top, and that's where you start to separate those solids and liquid streams. The liquids then go into what's called biological nutrient removal, which is a, basically a cleaning process where biology, microbiology interacts with the wastewater, eats the bugs that are in the wastewater, basically cleans it in a natural process, mimics what, actually what rivers do. And so you have microbiology working with the existing organic material in wastewater, and it literally eats it and cleans it up. It's done, you know, it's a highly, highly scientific, you know, process that's very precise, and it uses a lot of air, and it uses a lot of chemical balance, but it really does just mimic nature. And, and that's something that, that we've managed to do at a, with a high rate of success in that process. Then the, the liquid then goes to what's called a secondary clarifier, another process to, really to settle out some of those bugs that were working with cleaning wastewater in the primary process. And then it goes to what's called disinfection, and we put parasitic acid with the water, and it kills all that E. coli pathogen stuff before it goes into the river. And then it is discharged into the South Flat River at both of our locations, and the water that is discharged into the river is cleaner than the river water itself. And so that's something not only we're very proud of, but it's something we have to do because we have a discharge permit from the state that says the water has to have all these constituents taken out of it, it's got to be cleaned to this level, and we hit that mark every day, always. And so it's very, very clean water, and we're very proud of that. On the solid side, as you see from the schematic here, the solids are taken into what's called a digester, and they're essentially heated up, and then they interact with microbiology again, and they digest themselves, the solids, and in that process, they're chemically converted, and they convert, the digestion process produces methane, quite a bit of methane, actually. We then take that methane and we convert it to electricity. And that process, any, any organic matter that decomposes produces methane naturally, or even in, you know, artificially digested process like this, we're able to capture all that methane and, and offset 40% of our electrical load. And so it's a huge cost savings for us. It's a very, you know, when we say recover resources, this is an example of what we do. We make sure that we're using all these resources to offset costs and to be environmentally, you know, thoughtful. After the solids are digested, they're in a relatively clean state, it's something like a fertilizer at that point, they are, they go into a de-watering process with centrifuges, water is taken out of that, so it's easier really to haul and manage. And then we take those truckloads of that, that product, which is a biosolids product, out to the eastern plains, and it's put onto farms, including our own 50,000 acre farm out in Deer Trail. We produce about, just shy of 100 tons of solids every single day. So that's what 2.2 million people in the Denver area are producing for us. And that never stops, rain or shine. We've got 100 tons to deal with, it's got to be taken off-site, and it's got to be managed. So again, we sustainably manage that by using it as a biosolids product that is a soil amendment and helps farmers grow their crops. We have a long list of farmers who want to use our product, and as I said, about 40% of it goes to our own farm. So, a really sustainable process and something that we do very successfully. So, a couple of things I want to talk, oh, yes?
Yeah, back on the other slide, for step one, how much is going, being diverted into landfills?
It's about one small truck every two or three days, I think. So most of this stuff is kind of trash-type stuff that you, that you would get, paper products, plastic, things that'll get caught in the bar screens, and it takes a little while to fill up a roll-off container, so it can be one, one or two a week, depending on what we're getting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So what we are very proud of at Metro is our innovation program. And there, there's a reason we're proud of that. There is a very direct relationship between innovation and investing in innovation in this space and ratepayer value. The, the limits that have been set by EPA and by the CDPHE on our permits and our operations are very stringent. They're very difficult to manage. They take a high level of operational excellence, they take a lot of chemicals, a lot of power, and, and frankly, a lot of capital investment to facilitate that process. The more we can innovate to do things less expensively, to extract more resources and get revenue streams out of those, the better our ratepayers are standing when it comes to future investments that we know we're always going to have to make. So we have what I would, I would characterize as the most advanced innovation program in wastewater in the entire country, if not one of the world, one of the best in the world. And it has resulted in hundreds of millions of dollars of ratepayer savings, and we're very, very proud of that. A couple of examples of things we're doing. We have a, a requirement to remove phosphorus from the wastewater stream. Phosphorus, as you know, in large quantities can damage downstream rivers, it creates algae, cyanotoxins, it's very toxic out in the environment. So taking it out is something that's very important for people in my, my business. It is also very expensive to do it, as you might imagine, and many of us in this business have invested hundreds of millions of dollars to build facilities to remove phosphorus. Well, one of the things we are finding is that even with those investments, some of the phosphorus was still getting through, and it was getting close to permit limits. And so we initiated a technology here called Magprex, which was the largest type of installation in the world. It was, it's been done in Europe, and it precipitates phosphorus in the middle of the cycle, creates what is essentially a fertilizer, and that's going to allow us, right now that fertilizer is being composted, but when we get it up to a certain quality and a certain amount, we're going to be able to sell that fertilizer for folks to grow crops, and it's probably a southern, southern Colorado, you know, probably market down there for that. So that's going to be a way to take something out, we have to take out, monetize it on the other end, ultimately benefit, you know, our ratepayers in both sides. So that's something we're really proud of, an early innovation that's already paying off. Another one is heat, and this is a really fascinating one. So wastewater is hot. And it's hot because we take showers, and it's hot because we run dishwashers, and it's hot because we wash clothes. And all that water goes into the system, and even though it travels hundreds of miles, or can travel hundreds of miles, depending on where you are situated, it stays hot all the way through the system. And that heat has thermal energy that can be utilized. Right now, it's just passing into the river ultimately, you know, pretty much unchecked. What we thought was a better idea was to try to utilize that heat, and in district heating and cooling systems, you can tap a heat exchanger directly into our lines, extract heat, and heat and cool large campuses. We're doing it at the National Western Center right now, and it's a very successful pilot. It's a, a large-scale pilot that ultimately could heat and cool all of, all of the National Western Center. But there's an interesting driver for expanding this idea, and that is that CDPHE wants us to cool our effluent, because when it goes into the river, they feel it's too hot for, to support aquatic life. It's a significant drop that they would like us to undertake in terms of dropping the temperature down to about seven or eight degrees Celsius in the wintertime. The traditional way to do this is to build cooling towers or chillers, which are intense users of energy, very expensive, and ultimately, again, just dissipating that energy up into the air, and, and not the best environmental or public health solution because it costs so much money for our ratepayers, with a very negligible benefit of not being able to use that energy. So our plan is to explore utilizing all of the heat that we have to remove into district energy systems like National Western. And we think we can do it either from the system itself, or from our effluent, and take that and pipe that most likely to downtown Denver and heat and cool a large portion of downtown Denver, including some of the new developments. There's a potential revenue stream on that, as a provider of that, of that source of energy. We won't have to build cooling towers, we'll save millions of dollars, tens if not hundreds of millions of dollars on operational costs on cooling towers, and it's a perfectly sustainable solution. It would be the largest installation in the world that has ever done this. They've done it in Europe, they're kind of ahead of us on everything in this space in Europe, but this would be larger than that. We have a great benefit for our ratepayers of saving them money on the cooling end, and we probably earn some money from selling the heat as well. So this is something that's very exciting, probably five to 10 years out for total build-out, but something that our staff is really fired up about.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I think you just answered at the end, but this is, you're basically going to be selling, like, really thermal heat to whoever's downtown.
Yeah, the, the idea is, you know, ultimately, a partnership has to be struck with who's the, the end-users of the heat. Likely Excel would be involved in this, you know, possibly, but I would say likely, and probably city and county Denver as well. So you have the developers, the power company, and the city. We get everyone together and talk about what it's going to cost to build a system, operate a system, and what we would need to basically, you know, have, have a payback and a, and ultimately, you know, a net positive in terms of revenue. And we get everyone together, and I'm, I'm pretty, I'm convinced we can, because this is, it's a lot cheaper to access heat like this than it would be for them to, you know, create, you know, energy on the other end and buy it. So, yeah, ultimately, this would be a net ra, net revenue benefit for the ratepayers.
Because this does, it seems, it seems very kissing cousin to geothermal energy and how that's used, as if the heat's already there in the underground. Approximately, and I understand if you don't have this number, but approximately, how many homes does it take to do a facility the size of the Western complex?
Oh, as far as generating that amount?
Yeah, in order to heat a facility of that magnitude, how much do you have to take in to put out?
It's probably about, I would say about 5% of our system creates the heat in that particular line, so let's just say 100,000 people, basically, more or less, would create enough for a National Western.
Okay, and, and you, and there's not excess heat coming out, but that facility manages to take all the heat produced by about 100,000 homes?
Yeah, well, it depends on when they want to take it. It could take that much, yeah. So they have a heat exchanger in the pipe that, you know, can take heat when they want to take it. For, to run their system, they probably need a lot less than that, but that's the available amount in that particular area.
Okay, I, I was just thinking, it makes an interesting presumption to see how far you can spread it to where, to, how much can you heat with the heat transfers, essentially?
It's about 200 megawatts of energy that we could produce with the total amount of effluent heat we have. So if we could access all of that, you're talking about, the downtown steam loop could likely be taken care of. The new developments, they're talking about ball, arena developments, river mile developments, those could patch in. So there's a lot of opportunity in terms of customers here, and we have, this right now is just going into the river, so it's a great, you know.
Councilmember Rupert.
I, I'm interested in this idea, you know, we have a northern trunk line that carries a whole bunch of waste from the city. Can you have small locations where you do this heat exchange process on Sheridan, and suddenly you're able to heat a small tech center or a small office complex?
It, it's possible, the, the, and this is where I probably have to bring in, you know, the people who actually know what they're talking about, my engineers, but you do have to concentrate the heat pretty heavily before it's, it's really usable in the heat exchanger scenario. So I think we've mapped out all our lines, and, and you know, the Clear Creek line that runs basically, you know, through this area is a potential candidate as you go down the Clear Creek line. Further upstream, it's less, it's just less efficient, basically, to run the equipment. But we have put together a heat map, more or less. We actually had shared that with board members at one point, I could send that to Dominic and Greg again, so.
Yeah, if you could send that to our team, I'd be very curious to see that.
Yeah, absolutely. So yeah, so those are just a couple of exciting things that we're doing in terms of, you know, innovation that have direct benefits for our ratepayers and are tackling some of this regulatory burden that we're facing. You know, the stuff that's near and dear to all of our partners' hearts, you know, what, what are we paying for, and why does this stuff cost so much? So the way that we get revenue is through three sources. One is what we call annual charges, that's charges that each connector gets for use of the system, and you pay those in a, in a quarterly cycle. Sewer connection charges, which are charges for new connections into the sewer system, the concept there being, of course, you know, the, the system has been built by all of us, invested billions and billions of dollars, new people should, you know, ante into that, into that system that they're getting the benefit for. And then the third source is what we call interest in other sources, which used to be a very small chunk of our revenue, but that's growing because of some of our innovative work. So we're selling, you know, trying to sell fertilizer, we're going to sell heat, we're also getting environmental credits for the methane conversion work we do, and that's going to continue when we change that to renewable natural gas, which we'll be doing soon. So those sources are getting up into the millions of dollars now in terms of revenue coming from other sources, which of course just offsets the rates that we have to pay, so they're really beneficial for our ratepayers. Just some, you know, idea of where the dollar size here, about 130, you know, million in capital and operating in 24, our debt service is about 50. We take in about 57 million in 24 on sewer tap fees, and our annual charges are 155. So with you guys with the financial bent, you can see the revenues don't match the expenses, and that's because we have a, a reserve fund, most of which has been funded by some of our bond issuances, our recent bond issuers. So those will be paid out to defray, you know, the, the need to have large rate increases going forward in the future. Our capital expenditures, it says 1.29 billion on this slide over the next 10, I think that's already outdated. We're probably at 1.5 is what we're thinking for the next 10. Those capital projects are related almost entirely to meeting extremely difficult regulations that are going to be hitting Colorado over the next five to 10 years. So CDPHE has decided that they want, because they can control us, and they can't control everyone else who discharges into the river, they want those who can discharge into the river to be basically putting almost pure water into the river. That's going to be quite an investment on our end, including over a billion dollars to build something called tertiary treatment, highly advanced, which will essentially produce almost drinking water quality effluent. So a lot of investment needed just to keep up with what we're required to do going forward in the future. So if you look at a chunk of, just, you know, seeing this in graph form, as you can see, our annual charges and sewer connection charges make up the biggest chunk of our revenue, and then we've got interest in, in some of that other revenue coming on the outside. That makes about 219 million a year. And then the expenditures are pretty much 40/40 on capital and operating, and about 20% for debt. That remains fairly constant. We're seeing operating costs creep up a little bit relative to capital, but that all just depends on what we're building in a given year. We do have to constantly build and upgrade our facilities to keep up with aging infrastructure and those regulatory requirements. So the challenges ahead slide, this is the stuff that we geek out on, but this is all related to cost in the end. The cost of business is the last, you know, bullet on there, but it's the most important piece, because every one of these things is contributing to costs that in our business have been exploding at a rate faster than inflation. And the first one is regulatory unpredictability, which is really linked to the second one. So we were built in the 60s to handle domestic wastewater, you know, basically the wastewater from homes, commercial industries, you know, like, things like restaurants and other, you know, offices. Industry, we, we regulate separately. We have a pre-treatment program that regulates industry to ensure that they do pre-treatment at their industries to make sure it's not something that's really being absorbed in terms of the community cost directly from the communities. But there are these new contaminants now that have been discovered, they're not new per se, they've been around for a long time, but they've been discovered, and they are going to drive up the cost of treatment dramatically. PFOS is one of them you've probably heard about. So PFOS is in virtually, it seems like every product you've ever touched in your lives, and we get it at our plant, we don't create it, we don't, it doesn't have anything to do with our process, it comes to us, we have no way of removing it at this point, and then it passes through our, our processes, either goes into the biosolids or it goes into the river. We will have some level of liability to take PFOS out of the wastewater coming up in the next 10 years. It's going to happen. Drinking water obviously already is dealing with that right now. The, the trick and the problem we have with PFOS is that we, we can go out and isolate some industries that are using processes that involve PFOS, but most of it, and I mean the, the large majority, is coming from us. It's coming from us, it's coming from our households. This is not something where I can just go shut down a few factories and we don't have PFOS anymore. So the products that we use are getting into the water stream, and then, then they're getting into our bodies through the water stream. And so really, the best way to deal with this is not to invest billions of dollars at the wastewater plant and continually take this stuff out and knock our customers down who can't pay for their rent and having trouble making their car payments. It's taking this out of the system before it even gets there. So we are heavily involved in the state level on advocacy and, you know, PFOS regulations with, in terms of products and manufacturing. We're also heavily involved nationally in that, and I'm involved in an organization called NACWA, which is the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. We're the lobbying arm for wastewater around the country. I'm currently the president of that organization, and we are doing a lot of work in Washington, DC, to try to get PFOS out of the commerce stream. The other highly kind of volatile thing that's going on is Congress passed, or the EPA under the Biden administration declared PFOS to be a CIRCLA contaminant, which means that if you, if it passes through your facility, you're now liable for CIRCLA liability. And anything that needs to be cleaned up, we may be on the hook for cleaning it, even though it just passed through our system. So we're working very hard with our elected representatives in DC, with EPA currently, to make sure there's an exception for water and wastewater, since we don't create this stuff, we're past serenity, and why should our citizens have to pay up for this chemical that was built, you know, and profited, you know, profited by the, the chemical companies? In essence, we would be paying to be poisoned as a public. And we think that's wrong, and that, you know, if we have to clean up all the PFOS in the metro area because it went through metro or went through the water providers, our bills are going to, you know, multiply in ways that we, we would never want them to. So we're really working hard on advocacy in that space. But those emerging contaminants are really difficult for us to manage because we're not built to handle those. We can build facilities, we think, you know, theoretically can handle them down the road, but they're going to be extraordinarily expensive to build and operate. So there's got to be a more holistic way to manage this thing, and the best way to do it is to take it out of commerce. Aging infrastructure and workforce are two things I'm sure you hear all the time about in the municipal setting, in the state setting. We've, we've got to replace a bunch of stuff that's old. We do a pretty good job of keeping on top of that at Metro, and so we're not in a terrible position vis-à-vis some of our brethren in the business, but you still have to keep on top of it, so that costs money. If you don't, you know, the last thing you want is a sewer pipe breaking in the middle of the city, the last thing you want is a, a breakdown in our system where we're putting raw sewage into the river. So we, that's something we have to stay on top of, that's, that's our, our mission as a public, you know, a public health agency. Workforce is a fascinating one, and something that, if people say, "What keeps you up at night?" This keeps me up at night. Finding people who want to go into this business as opposed to making video games or, you know, being on TikTok, or, you know, just being a billionaire in general, I guess, is hard. And so we're really trying to go out, we, we work directly in Arvada, actually. The high schools here in Arvada, we work with Red Rocks Community College to get people into the water sector, talk about maintenance jobs, operator jobs, all of which have interesting tech applications, have really exciting career paths, and there's a place to go. There's a big chunk of our workforce that's between, say, you know, 48 and 65, they're ready to retire, and young people can move up and get good jobs and good careers, and we're just really trying to sell this to the community because it's hard to find them. Yes, ma'am.
So you're working with, with the high schools, and I'm presuming the community colleges. What about some of the workforce training centers that tend to serve populations who maybe just got their GED, and then they're finally, 10 years later, ready to get a career, or maybe they had a bad cycle of luck, and they're ready to retrain their lives? Are you also working with those groups?
So we are starting to do that. That's, we, we actually started a partnership with Denver Water, Mile High Flood District, us, and I want to say there's one more, Aurora, to do just that, to identify all these, all these sources of potential folks that might want to get into our industry, and that, that's, you know, there's, there's a number of places that have those programs. So as a unit to get, you know, banding together, we have more resources to be able to do that and more, basically offer people more geographic opportunities. So yeah, that is something we've been starting to do.
Thank you. We just have a really neat program called The Bridge here in Arvada at, it's in Mayor Pro Tem Mormon's district. They, they offer a wide variety of programs, but I don't believe anything like this, but you could find some, probably some interesting candidates, I would think.
Well, yeah, we will definitely follow up on that because
Thank you.
This is, yeah, I mean, if we don't find a pipeline here, it's going to be difficult to keep, you know, keep this thing going. So that's just something we all worry about, and, you know, everybody in our business talks about it a lot. The last thing on here is what's called a one-environment solution, and this is just the idea that, I, I think, hold on, let's see the next slide. Yeah, this is a good manifestation of this. So there's been this, this idea of something called one water, which is a really good idea, and it is, it's the, it's the recognition that the water that we use is continually used over and over and over. All the drops of water that are here have been here since the dawn of time. But particularly in the front range, we use this water in a big cycle. So your drinking water is coming from, you know, it's either coming from, you know, the over the continental divide, you know, for the Colorado River system, or it's coming from groundwater sources or, you know, front-range sources. That water gets used, goes to somebody like us. We put it back into the river, just down the river from them. It gets used again for drinking water, recreation, aquatic life, farming. This is a cycle that can, you know, repeats itself and completes itself. And so one of the things that we've been working on for a couple of decades is ensuring that all of the water providers, all the water entities from the municipalities to the stormwater folks, to the drinking wastewater folks are working together. So we don't make a decision on one end that affects the other person negatively and the same ratepayers are paying for something that we're kind of like PFAS, putting it in, taking it out. We had a very successful partnership with Denver Water who was, had some hits on their lead service program. They were told by the state to add tons of phosphorus into their system, which, you know, can help manage lead in pipes, but it's a very bad thing for downstream wastewater because we just put $400 million in away in phosphorus. It would have wiped out all those phosphorus investments that we put in. We would have had to double that cost. So we convinced the state, along with Denver Water, to have a lead pipe removal program. Why should we just keep doing this over and over and paying for it? We, Metro put $20 million into that because it saved us more than 10 times that amount, at least, probably 20 times that amount in capital cost. So that's an example of a one water solution that works. But what we found is, is that just focusing on water is actually a little bit myopic. Because yes, we can make water cleaner. We can make investments in water that make a lot of sense. But when we make water cleaner, it has effects. It takes more chemicals to make water cleaner. It takes a massive amount of energy. Our energy, when you burn energy, you have greenhouse gases, you have emissions, just air emissions, pollution itself, you know, outside of the greenhouse gas discussion, pollution itself in crowded areas like the metro is a big deal to our residents and it's an important health concern. So to make water cleaner, you make the air dirtier. To make water cleaner, you use more chemicals, which has different byproducts and effects to the river itself, including food sources, chains, everything else. So thinking about all the decisions we make in a holistic way so we can have the maximum environmental benefit for the air, the water, the ground, how much it costs, I would argue that cost is an environmental factor, right? Because people, especially people in underserved areas and people who have a hard time paying their bills, do not care if the water's 99.8 or 99.9% clean. They care about whether they can pay their bills. And that difference could be a billion dollars in capital and operating costs. So we want to balance all this to ensure that we're doing the right thing for the environment, we're doing the right thing for our ratepayers. So we've, we try to look at every problem in what we call a one environment way. So is this going to be the ultimate benefit for the environment, the community? And we're not backing down on our mission. We will clean water and we will recover resources and we will protect health. We're not backing down from that at all. We just want to make sure our investments make the most sense and that the money is going to an actual environmental and public health benefit. And so that's something we think about all the time. So that's, you know, quick race through the wastewater world that we are in and happy to answer any questions, but again, just really appreciate the time today.
Open it to council for additional questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for joining us this evening. This was a very interesting presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Our next workshop is on boards and commissions. Ms. Morris, is this your item? We so rarely see you come up. This is different.
It's just so exciting for me to actually be at the podium.
I know.
I never get to do that.
The people at home get to see the lower half of your body.
Right. Exactly.
Well.
Exactly.
She's standing.
A full outfit.
There we are. Down, yes.
Style choices. All right. So today I'm going to be talking to you about boards and commissions, obviously. So before we get started, I just wanted to preface this by saying I have 11 slides. I have timed myself on this presentation. It takes me 18 minutes to do my piece of this. I am happy to spend as much or as little time with you after that that you want me to, and I will be asking for your feedback at various points, but, but I just wanted to make sure that, that you guys knew that moving in. So as we're talking about boards and commissions, I kind of want to frame out the, what we're talking about, what we mean when we say boards and commissions. Cause you are on a lot of boards and there's various different types of boards. What we're really talking about today are advisory boards and commissions. So boards that you as a council create to provide you with advice or, you know, information or research related to certain policy topics. There are other boards and commissions that you create, including quasi judicial boards and also municipal authorities like Aura. And an example of quasi judicial would be like planning commission or board of adjustment, things like that. We aren't going to talk a lot about that today. We're focusing mostly on advisory boards. So the idea of this whole project, looking at streamlining our boards and commissions came out of some suggestions we had from our city clerk and also from our staff liaison so, to the boards and commissions. So this would be the staff members who are assigned to support each of our advisory boards and commissions. We've been talking a whole lot about ways that we can make our boards and commission system more efficient and effective and just aligning it better with council's strategic priorities and getting you the output that you need. So right now internally, we have a working group that's composed of the city attorney's office, city manager's office, CED, infrastructure and VCN. So we've got a number of different people under, from those different departments talking about these things. In order to optimize our boards and commissions and determine how we want to move forward and how we want to make them more efficient and effective, we've done a lot of research. So we have talked to our staff liaisons who have a lot of information about how our boards function. We, I sent a survey to council. Thank you for your responses to that. That helped me know.
Every member but council member Pfeiffer.
Yes, we had six responses.
He just wants to give it life.
We'll just.
You know what I tell my team? If I'm not at the dinner, I am the dinner. I'm the dinner tonight. Yes, I have no vote or voice.
We'll still be asking for input from everyone. So you'll still get a chance to, to voice some opinions. But, but that's helpful. It was incredibly helpful for me in preparing for this discussion tonight and helping make my presentation effective and helping focus it on the things that really matter, that we need a little bit more robust conversation on. I did the same thing with boards and commissions. We created a survey. We sent it out to them. Happy to forward that to you if you're interested in seeing it. But we got a lot of responses from people who are currently serving on our boards and commissions.
Yeah, I think we would like to see that.
Okay, absolutely. I can, I can absolutely forward that to you. We did, also did some research on what other cities are doing with their boards and commissions and their practices. So I went online, looked at and sent some emails out, looked at the practices from 10 other cities and created some statistics for you that we'll look at later in the presentation. We also looked at recommendations that are being made by organizations like ICMA, who's, you know, an expert in the area of local governance, just to get some ideas on how we might want to change our systems, particularly from a policy perspective prior to coming to council. So tonight is the first presentation in what I anticipate will be maybe two or three presentations to council as we talk to you about going through this, making changes. We're going to probably redo some ordinances, things like that. So you'll see us back in front of you for various pieces of this project moving forward. And it'll be a relatively long process. I anticipate that it'll take us at least several months to get through it. So in terms of tonight, what we're talking about tonight, giving you a little bit of a preview, we're going to talk first about the why behind boards and commissions. I'll give you a very general overview of the survey results. We're going to, I have some follow-up questions about those survey results to make sure that I'm getting your direction correct. I will talk through some of the identified opportunities that we picked out of those survey responses and our conversations with our staff liaisons. And then finally, we're going to talk about some policy recommendations that were made by ICMA and I'll get direction from council on those things. All right. So starting with the why of boards and commissions, I know that you as a council know this, but I thought it would be helpful to start with this for anybody who's listening who may not know these things in general. So for the upwards of 10 people who might be watching, this is why we do this. So it's going to be so exciting. Yeah.
You broke me with that one, Ms. Morris.
I, you know, when I, when I first came in here, I was like, okay, following up wastewater, that's probably good for me, right? But then I watched the presentation. It was really interesting. So now I'm, anyway, it's going to be fascinating. You're going to love this. So starting out, why do we have boards and commissions? It's an important way that we as a city engage our community. So it's a way that we can ensure we have full representation of the opinions and perspectives of our residents, making sure that we're reflecting the diversity of those opinions in our government decision-making processes. They can also serve as technical, giving us technical expertise and advice. We have a lot of really smart people who live in our city, who have different lived life experiences, different perspectives that can provide us with advice that, on issues that we may not be familiar with. So that's also important. And finally, leadership development. So having people on boards and commissions is really an important recruiting ground and training ground for us. So before I came tonight, I had Ms. Rush pull some statistics for me on which members of council had served on boards and commissions prior to being on council. Yeah, absolutely. So we have John Marriott was on the board of adjustment and the gold line committee before serving on council. Council member Davis was on the parks advisory committee and the golf advisory committee, right? Yeah. And then Mayor Pro Tim Mormon was on the sustainability committee. So these are really important training grounds for us. We also have a number of prior council members who did the exact same thing.
And just so the public's aware, that doesn't mean the rest of us didn't do things.
Right.
We just weren't necessarily on a city board.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you were Hoda. You were Red Rocks.
Council member Pfeiffer was on Hoda. Yeah. There were, there were other things out there, absolutely. We're just talking about advisory boards today. So I just picked the examples from there. You guys are all important. All right. So now that, now that we've covered that, key themes from our survey, we had, there was a lot of information from council that you were willing to share with us about how much you valued the input that you receive from our boards and commissions. There was definite interest in seeing more alignment between the council's strategic plan and the work that we're seeing out of our boards and commissions. We talked, you talked to us a little bit about staff support in appointments under certain circumstances and also structured reporting, among other things. We asked some similar questions to our boards and commission members and we got a lot of different responses from them as well. They're generally satisfied with their service. They provide, or they find value in it. They find it rewarding. But they did express some concerns about just wanting to have clearer role definition, also wanting to have more structured reporting with council. A lot of the same things that council is expressing as well. So we found that there were a lot of shared priorities between council, our board and commission members and our staff liaisons in terms of what we want to do moving forward. All right. So I had a couple of questions on the survey follow-up that I wanted to talk with you about really quick before we talk about our identified opportunities. And the first one was staff involvement in board and commission interviews. If you'll recall, we had a question in there about what council would prefer the role of our staff liaisons to be with board and commissions interview processes. And most of council agreed that they'd like to have staff have a role in screening and recommending candidates for boards and commissions. It was very important to council from those survey responses that council have that final say and who to put on these boards and commissions. And that makes complete sense. You know, having council be the ones to choose the community members that ultimately provide that service. One of the things though, that I wanted to try to revisit along these lines is that we did have some comments from some of our board and commission members about, number one, asking why they didn't have other committee members on their interview panel. So they would have appreciated some of that perspective as part of the interview. And then we also had some, some feedback from both our staff liaisons and from our board and commission members about wanting to make sure from the very outset that the ideas and perspective that an interviewee has matched the work of the board. And so one of the things that I thought might be helpful, and I wanted to get your feedback on tonight, is suggesting that, not necessarily that staff or a commission member, current commission member have a vote in who gets on a board or commission, but having one or both of those people sit in as advisory to council as they're doing those interviews. So I wanted to get some perspective. And I don't know if you guys want to run through really quick, one by one, or just provide input as you hit your lights.
So I have an initial thought on that is that when we do these interviews, the 10 minutes goes by so incredibly quickly. We always joke that it's speed dating. I love the idea of having somebody who's familiar with the work of the board there to answer their questions. It's far more able to do so than we are. But I would think we might want to consider then lengthening to maybe 15 minutes, those interview windows, just so that we can build in time for that.
Okay, okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you. Yeah, I would echo that, what the mayor said. And I would, I think, you know, all of us, especially those of us who've gone through this for many years have, you know, we get those huge packets of applicants, and which I will say speaks volumes about our community, the fact that we have so many people that apply every year to all of our boards and commissions. And we hear from our fellow council members in other cities that that is not the case more than likely there. So I think that just really speaks to our community in particular and how dedicated folks are to be part and engaged in, in our Vada and our city government, which to me is so exciting. So I, I want to continue to encourage that. But I think to your point, Rachel, that having the staff be more involved in helping screen the initial review and then giving us a smaller subset, I would appreciate that. And then I do think having a, a commission member as part of the interview committee and a staff would be great too. But I think to, again, to the mayor's point, we'd have to have longer interviews, which I think a lot of our applicants would appreciate because they feel like, that was it, you know? And, and why did I, you know, why did I come, you know? And we, and coming into person, coming to person, to be in person also, you know, we, we had an offer to do hybrid to, with virtual, but, but I think it might make it feel more valuable to the applicants if they are longer and that they have a greater input from a larger panel. So I would support that.
That makes sense. Council member Rupert.
It would also be useful to have a staff person as a member of the interview committee as, it'll help provide a mix of the experience and the expertise present in the room already so that we can create balanced boards that bring in a multiple of points of view. That would be useful.
Council member Davis.
It would be helpful to have the staff liaison involved when there is not a council member assigned to that board and commission or commission.
So are you talking about interviews or generally as part of the commission?
Oh, no, when we're doing the interviews.
Okay.
Yes.
Makes sense. Anyone else? Anyone else have any objection? Okay. Objection to us having.
Oh, Bob, come on.
I don't get to say anything. I'm sorry.
Okay. Bob, I restore your speaking privileges.
I was filling out the survey as we were talking. So you get it back when you get back to the, but I would say I agree. I mean, I've done this for a long time now. I think, you know, the one thing that I was getting out of sometimes is we would appoint people and the chemistry and the, let's just, let me just be blunt. The chemistry within the committee might not have jived very well and there could be some misalignment of objectives. And then the unfortunate staffer had to deal with that goulash that council might have made. So I do think having a, an actual team member from the city staff being, I, I'm not sure about having another committee member in with us necessarily because, you know, sometimes we want to make sure that these committees are actually moving the ball and not just being impeding process or innovation or moving forward, you know? We want to make sure these committees are actually adding value to the city and to city council. So I would, I would say more of a staff person that's assigned to that than, than a committee member.
Yeah. In particular, I like the technical expertise. A lot of times with some of these boards, it's very helpful. I, I know I've given interviews to individuals who are so much more vastly qualified in sustainability or in transportation or in infrastructure than I am. I, I feel like it should be reversed. They should be interviewing me. And so having somebody with that level of expertise who can gauge whether that person truly knows what they're talking about or if they're full of hot air would be extraordinarily helpful.
And even being able to vet, like what do you need on this particular commission at this particular time? Is there a gap in expertise or perspective that we want to fill? So, okay, thank you for that. So next question I have is on timing of reports. So we had a lot of response from council that either annual or biannual reports from boards and commissions would be preferred. The highest vote we got from board and commission members was quarterly reports. So I'm trying to think about marrying those two up and seeing if we can do maybe a more robust annual robust annual report, both written and maybe some presentation piece, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And then, if a committee or a commission really wants to, allowing them to provide a brief court, written quarterly report, would you, would you be interested in reviewing that as well?
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
So, in my survey, I said, I'm going to keep it up all night. No, you know what? What boils this, so, you might have it somewhere else in here, but the frequency of the meetings, I think it depends on the committee, because every committee meets differently.
Yeah.
And so, I think to answer your question, it depends on how we structure the committees. Because I do, I, I feel, and my peers here can weigh in, I think sometimes some of these committees meet too frequently, and some may not meet enough. So, I think if Human Services versus maybe the Transportation Advisory Committee, you know, meets every month, versus Human Services, I think meets like three months and they're done. But, you know, if we change that their meetings were like quarterly, then maybe we should have an annual or biannual, you know what I mean, meeting? But if they were monthly, then I can see maybe definitely biannual, if that makes sense.
That makes sense.
But I rather, I want to get to a conversation around frequency of meetings, and then, I'm assuming you're going to get around, hopefully, to something around.
Yeah, we'll do, and we have a wrap-up at the end as well. So, any other topic that I haven't covered that you have comments on, we can absolutely talk about as well. Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Mormon, did you have another question?
Actually, Councilmember Davis had her light on next.
Okay.
I did complete the survey. I do. So, harkening back to my park advisory days, we were so excited about the work that was being done in, within the committee itself, and in part with the, with the city, that we came to council once a quarter and gave an update, because we were doing things like playground inspections and TLC around parks, and going to different, different meetings outside of the city. Like, we would go to APEC's meetings and see where park advisory could, could liaison between the APEC's board. And it was so much fun, and we were really excited. And I feel like if they're doing good work, we should hear about it.
Okay. Anyone else?
No additional lights at this time.
Okay. And then, the final question I had was on structure of reporting. One of the other things that some of our board and commission members brought up, and we've talked about this with the staff liaisons as well, is the possibility of potentially having a joint work session between the boards and commissions and council once a year, so that boards can do rotating, you know, annual presentation, a short presentation, and council can really talk about their vision for the work of the boards and commissions as a whole, and maybe gives, provide some comments to each board and commission about how they see their work supporting the strategic vision of council. So, what are, what are the thoughts on that?
Councilmember Davis.
I really like that. And when I sat a couple times on APEC, when I would see APEC members and the Golf Advisory Committee, when I'd see them out in public, they would ask me, "Well, where does council want us to go? What do they want us to do?" And I would always say, "Well, we want you to tell us what you're seeing out there in the wild, what you, we want your advice. Advise us on, on things that need to be done, or gaps that you see need to be filled." But, it was kind of a struggle bus forum, so maybe this kind of a recap annually will help with the level setting.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Yeah, I, this is something that I've been thinking about in terms of needing, you know, we hear from the boards and commissions needing more direction from council, and so I just feel like we need to have a better relationship in developing that. And so, you know, one of my ideas is, is maybe, and this would probably fall on, more on the staff liaison, to help draft a work plan for the year with the commission, then come to council and present that draft, so that we can give feedback on that. Not come blank slated and say, "What do you want us to work on?" But I think, you know, I think to Councilmember Davis's point, have them initiate it and say, "This is the work plan we would like to start working on for this year," and then present that to us, and we can give that kind of feedback. That, that's kind of how I see this might be a good way to proceed.
I love that idea, and that has also been one of the suggestions that we've been talking about with the staff liaisons already, is trying to make more formal work plans. There's a number of boards and commissions that actually do strategic planning, they have specific goals, but we just don't daylight that maybe as much with council. And so, starting to do that a little bit more to make sure that council is aware of what the goals are for each of these boards and commissions, they have the opportunity to provide feedback, so that those plans can be finalized, and we're, we're aligning those goals more closely with council's vision.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Yeah, I support that from Mayor Pro Tim Mormon. I think that's exactly where we need to go with that. I also, I wonder if they should, at least the chairs, should be part of our retreat. I know some show up sometimes, but, you know, I think if they can see the sausage making with the staff and where we're going, they can get an idea of how do they align to, to inform the work plan. Because I know, I know some of the groups are trying to do work plans, it's like herding cats sometimes, but they, they've got to like get a work plan and get it done like right away. They can't, I mean, I'm seeing some committees taking six months to a work plan, but we're already moving into the next year, and that work plan from the previous year was still not done.
Right.
So, it is a little difficult, but maybe you can do like two or three or five-year work plans, so that the liaison is not having a heavy lift every year when somebody's new on there. But I think if you can get the work plan, and we have every chair at least come to our retreats, that they, not necessarily sit at the table, participate, but they can, they need to be there to listen on what's going on. I think that would help inform them to be better aligned. So, when they do come present the work plan, they can say, "We aligned with the strategic goal that we heard at your last one, and, and we got here, and, and we showed the golden thread between all of the groups, and how it connects."
Makes a lot of sense.
And minimize the lift on the, the team member that's liaising with them.
Yeah. Councilmember Davis.
I like that idea, but we have to remember that it's a volunteer sitch. So, asking somebody to take a whole day of their weekend to do something like that can maybe be a heavy lift. So, I, you know, I think it's a fantastic idea.
You should not shall. Should come to the retreat.
Should not shall.
May, may come to the, and also, so I remember, again, harkening back to my APEC days, that Gordon would present, Gordon Rusink would present something during dinner or whenever to say, "Hey, this is what APEC is up to, so maybe if we could have something from the staff." I don't want to put more work on staff, but just a little, "Hey, guess what APEC's up to," and, and that's it, you know? Just something small.
Okay.
Councilmember Rupert.
I do like Bob's idea of having them attend the, the retreat. Part of it, I think honestly, is thinking them as our leadership trainees, if you will, getting them exposed to what else is going on in the city, and this is an opportunity to, to nurture that leadership.
Yep. I like that point. I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Mormon's idea about having sort of, because we need time to collect our thoughts as well. Seven individual people will all come up with seven individual conclusions, so having a sort of formalized, allowing us to maybe at a 5:00 PM, could be like, "Okay, here's APEC, or sustainability, or HACs plan, get our thoughts organized, then we can have that unified meeting. It'll make it go better in both directions," I think. And I also do like, I like should not shall. I, I don't think we can require them to have to take off work as volunteers, but at the same time, I love the idea of like making that inclusive, extending that invitation. I think that's a great point. And then, in addition, you had a secondary, the, the longer-term work plan. I feel like there could be additional benefit to that than every one year, because as projects are identified and work is commencing, we may actually attract candidates who are attracted on doing a specific project, being like, "Well, I know APEC's working on that park, and I want to work on that park." Or conversely, we might have a better understanding of where our knowledge gaps exist if we, if we have sort of a strategic plan, and the, for each group, and then, we're like, "Oh, we, we need a transportation engineer, so let's get one in the next round."
It's a good point. It's a good point. Anyone else? All right. So, we'll move on to identified opportunities. So, since our residents are willing to give us their time and expertise, it makes sense that we take the opportunity to really maximize that, that experience for them by identifying opportunities for improvement. So, out of the survey, out of our conversations with the staff liaisons, out of the research we did with other cities, we identified, there's a few things that, that continue to rise to the top. And so, one of those things is improve strategic alignment, and we've talked already about that tonight, and some ways that we might be able to do that with annual work plans and joint work sessions and things like that. Role clarity has been an important issue for boards and commission members, council, and staff liaisons. We can improve that through things like updating ordinances, maybe creating an ethics policy. We're also in the process of working on a handbook for our board and commission members, so it gives them a little bit more direction, so that they understand what their role is on a board. And then, looking at improving our onboarding processes, so right at the very outset of having our board and commission members come on board, we give them a little bit more education on how the city works, the work of the committee, some of the history behind the projects that they're currently working on, and other things like that. So, structured and regular reporting is something that, in particular, our board and commission members are really looking for. So, as Mayor Pro Tim Mormon indicated, we got a lot of comments on the survey to that as well. They really want to hear the feedback from council as part of that reporting process and be able to report out to council. So, that's something that we will definitely look at on some of, using some of the feedback that we've got today and through those surveys. Enhanced meeting processes are another thing. We have a lot of really engaged residents, which is a great thing. We're starting to have more interaction between our residents and our boards and commissions. And so, having a more efficient and effective meeting process where everyone knows how we manage public comment and things like that will be helpful for our staff liaisons and our board and commission members. And just in general, additional training as our board and commissions need it. So, every one of those steps is intended to try to help us create consistent, transparent processes that increase the trust between the city, our staff, and our residents who are serving on those boards and commissions. So, we'll talk about some higher-level policy issues next, in terms of the ICMA recommendations. But, when looking at identified opportunities, is there anything I don't have listed up there that you think should be included? All right. Well.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
I would just echo, I think, something that Councilmember Davis said, is celebrating.
Okay.
Celebrating our volunteers. And I know we have a volunteer appreciation event, which is fantastic, but even, you know, as we're thinking about the VADA report, or other ways that we can communicate out to the public what these folks are doing for the city. I think just continue looking for those kind of opportunities.
I really like that. Just trying to value the time and effort that they put into these processes, these processes and committees and all those kinds of things. I know we also got some comments from our festivals committee members about the amount of time that they spend volunteering at these festivals. I mean, that is really valuable to us, and so I love that idea of celebrating those, those contributions.
You know, one other thing that occurs to me along with that, in particular because you mentioned festivals, what are the budgets we apply to each of these committees? Is it enough? Is it not enough? Because in, to Councilmember Pfeiffer's point earlier, they're all very different. Some require more time, some require less time. And so, it would just be interesting for us to sort of have that information, because I know, you know, with different committees, particularly arts and culture and festivals, they can do so much more if we resource them appropriately, and, because they already do an incredible amount with what they're given, and so, love those guys.
Good point. I'll collect that information. Anyone else? All right. So, switching gears a little bit to some of these higher-level policy issues that we want to consider from our ICMA recommendations. Just for, I know that you know this, but ICMA is a recognized global leader in local governance. So, these recommendations came out of an article published by ICMA about how to better capture all voices and perspectives in a community by creating more opportunity to serve on boards and commissions. And so, we looked through those recommendations. We didn't pick up all of them right now, but these three kind of rose to the top for us in terms of things that we'd like to consider. And those three things being leadership rotation, so chair annual rotation, so that more often people get the opportunity to actually lead a meeting, they understand how that process, term limits, establishing shorter term limits than what we have right now, and then, maybe shifting our council role a little bit to align more with ICMA's recommendation and the practices of our peer cities. So, first one, first up is building leadership capacity by rotating annual chairs every year. This is an ICMA recommendation, and the reason why they recommend that we do that is to continue to train new people, give new people opportunities to learn and grow, but also, the person that you have sitting in that chair seat can affect the ideas that you elicit from the rest of the group. So, when you rotate chairs on an annual basis, you're more likely to stir up new ideas than you would if you don't do that. Our current practice varies based on the committee, it just depends on the bylaws. We're looking at streamlining that. And then, in terms of the practice in other cities, out of the 10 that we surveyed, five do a one-year rotation that's required at the chair position. Four don't have a required rotation, and then, one city has a two-year rotation. So, I wanted to get some feedback from council on that.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I like the required chair rotation, and, and, and make it part of their bylaws. You know, you can have a chair and a vice chair, and that's great when the chair can't make the meeting, but also, having the same chair voted in three years in a row because of a stronger personality, that's, that's not, that's not giving that diversity of leadership. And so, we should probably maybe have something where if, that, that they are required to change leadership annually. I do see that some of them may be dying on the vine and not working together properly because the wrong person is in the chair.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
I agree with that, and I support this. I guess my one question, though, or caveat, is this off, this can happen, where you have no one stepping up to replace the current chair, and so, what will we do then? Because I know we've had, you know, I've been in situations of that, where, you know, by default, we're like, "Well, the current chair is willing to continue on, and we have no one else stepping up, then we go with the current chair again for another year." So, how would we handle if, if we were to make this more of a requirement of our, of our boards and commissions? How would we handle a situation where no one else steps up?
So, we could build this in as a potential outcome. So, requiring that we rotate on an annual basis, so that at least people have the opportunity to throw their hat in the ring. And then, if no one does, we don't have to enforce it to the extent that, we don't want a, a situation where we're leaving a board or commission without a chair, right? And we don't want a situation where we have someone serving in that chair position who really does not want to be there. So, we could make it flexible in that sense, but I think providing that opportunity would be helpful.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Well, just like Dr. Cogge, you start at the bottom of the officers, and you move up, and you could, if you're really talking about building leadership capacity, you can start what, by introducing people into being the secretary, then the vice chair, and the chair, however it's structured, and then, it, then you fall off, then you're past chair. And you have that, what I like about that is there's continuity, because you might not have been the chair, but you're building up to become that officer, and so, that committee, if we are going to look at three, five-year, whatever, work plans, it would probably be good that, yes, it should rotate every year, but maybe it should build up. And I think it does put a lot on the staff, because they have to, they have to cultivate that leadership within that committee to get excited to volunteer. So, you know, I think you'll get volunteers if they understand, "How do you build?" Because somebody may be interested in becoming a leader, but don't understand how to become a leader.
It seems like it's a scary thing to do.
Right.
Unless you've come up through that system. So, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, or it's in your DNA, and you can just take charge. So, because I think of the committees I'm on, there are some really strong people that are very, very smart, but they're also maybe an introvert, and they may not want to, but they could add so much value, but they don't know how to get there.
Yeah.
So, that, that does add a complexity to, to put on the staff, but actually, some of the staff could maybe learn on, a good way to practice on themselves, how to coach people, and they can grow as well through that process. But, I like this idea. I just think, I think we should have the committees do that. And lastly, I would add that we should do this all at the same time of the year, because then, what I can see happening internally is you get all the liaisons on all of these, and then, we might can do a quick training about, "Okay, we need to do the training, you know, we got to get everyone ready, we got to move them up." And maybe internally, you can have a quick training session to coach the employees. can have a quick training session to coach the employees on how to deal with their committees through this leadership change or evolution or something.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pfeiffer, I really, really like that point, you know, and the inverse can also be true, which is not always the best. You have somebody jump in who's excited, raring to go, and no, and no leadership experience, but, you know, they're, they're ready to go, and nobody raises their hand, and so, the new person goes, "Well, I'll do it," and suddenly, you have somebody without the institutional knowledge in charge, and they have to be taught and handheld, and so, that's not necessarily the best either. And I also like how a lot of, like, the larger organizations, like Western Governors Association, National League of Cities, what they always do is they designate not just the chair, but also the vice chair, and it's a guaranteed rotation, the next year, the vice chair becomes chair. So, you know, and it becomes a collaborative partnership between those two, and I really like that idea as well, as a way to always guarantee that continuity.
I like it. Anyone else? All right. So, on to the second ICMA recommendation that we wanted to discuss with council. This is about term limits. One of the easiest ways for us to spark innovation in some of these boards and commissions is to get new voices at the table. So, having slightly shorter term limits will help us get to that place. Most other city, our current practice is 10 to 12 years. Most other peer cities that we looked at, it's eight to 10 years. And, let's see, in terms of who utilizes term limits, we had six other cities that utilized them in general, two that didn't have them at all, and two where it depended on the board. They had different bylaws that would dictate what the term limits are for members of that particular board. So, we wanna, we wanted to check in with council on this as well, just to see what your appetite is for maybe shortening that term limit just a little bit. It still gives them enough time in eight to 10 years to really learn the process, to go through that, that training, to have those leadership opportunities, but at the same time, it gives an extra two years that we can kind of give back to the community, and really utilize the people. As you were mentioning, Mayor Pro Tim Mormon, we have a lot of people in our community who are willing to volunteer, and so, we hate to leave that talent untapped. And this would just create a little bit more opportunity for that. So, I'd be excited to hear feedback from you on this, too. So, you, so Councilmember Pfeiffer, you put up eight fingers. So, is that eight years?
Yeah, eight, so eight total years, you know. I don't know if the term limits are four, you know, too forward, or whatever, but I do agree, they need to be shorter. I think some of the committees, some people stay on, and there's good and bad with that, you know, and I do agree, there is such a wealth of volunteers and great people that want to, but if we allow somebody to hold that seat for 12 years, then we might lose that opportunity to seize those other volunteers to participate in changing our city. So, that's my thought.
I tend to agree, eight. My singular thought, and I toss this on the table for consideration, the exception to me would be festivals, where, one, it's a lot of hard work to run a festival, even once you know the ropes, you're not necessarily great at it. We have a handful, a small number of people who are exceptionally good at it, they have it down, and this is what they like to do. They don't really want to do other boards and commissions. And moreover, this is the one board, because it's so large, we struggle to keep the maximum number of seats filled. We get it filled, but then it falls. So, I maybe put it for consideration, we make an exception for festivals alone on this one, but I agree with the eight years for every other board. Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, with this term limits, could it be that they are off for one year, and then they're free to come back for the eight years again?
You could set it up that way. What we're talking about right now, our current term limit doesn't provide for that, and so, we would be looking at eight to 10 years total. It wouldn't prevent people from serving on other boards and commissions. So, we've got a lot of different boards and commissions where people can volunteer, but if council wanted to do that, to say, "Okay, you have to sit out for one term, and then you can come back again," we can obviously build it that way.
Yeah, because I think that might help address what Mayor Simpson is talking about in keeping retention on some of these ones. And I think that also helps with burnout, like, take a break, you know, festivals is really hard, take a break from it for a year, and come back again. And I think sometimes that rest period can make you consider it from a different way, check out other festivals, or something, you know. I, I think that's a good practice overall, and especially considering that we do have more, consistently more applicants than available opportunities.
We can also build in consideration for the situation that we have with our festivals commission, so, we have, we struggle more with festivals commission getting volunteers than we do on the other boards. So, we can incorporate into our term limit provision, some language that says that, you know, if we don't have enough people to fill these seats, we're going to bring people on regardless of the term limit. So, that might mean that we renew terms for people existing on the board, it might mean that we bring people back who were there before, but council would always get a say in that, because you're the ones who appoint people to the committees.
I like that. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
So, two things. One, since I, gosh, I can't, I think I've been doing the interview for Festival Commission, was it Davis? Were you with me last time? But, what we always told them was they can always come back and volunteer, too, just as a volunteer, not as board member, but I also consider, like, that's a hard-working commission.
It is.
But, I, I almost feel like that commission should change, you know. I don't, I, I think we need to promote more that, "Hey, would you like to come volunteer for the festivals?" versus trying to use a commission to volunteer for the festivals. I think the commission should be the governance and oversight, and making sure it's all getting put together, but they shouldn't also carry the burden of 100% of the volunteerism has to be the board. There's people that are just willing to come and volunteer for the day, for the day, to a commission, and maybe we need, or the festival, so we may, I feel like we need to structure it differently. So, that would be one I would have been proposing, to look at it a little differently.
I know they allow others to come and volunteer, but that can be, getting people consistently and getting them trained can be really, really a struggle.
Well, I don't think we promote, like, "Hey, I know a lot of people want to volunteer, we talked about this book," but we don't say, "Have you ever thought of volunteering for a festival?"
Yeah.
We don't say that to anyone. So, they think they're volunteering for the city, they have to be on a board or commission, but there should be volunteering, like, we have what, the snow buddies, or whatever, we have the festival, the festivals themselves. I think we should be listing volunteer opportunities that not necessarily are board and, and commissions.
I mean, maybe more promotion of it, because I know, again, we do do it with our festivals, the bid does it, it's just been always like pulling teeth, getting folks to do it, that's why we see so many of the same faces over and over, but maybe it's a promotional opportunity, get people out, all that kind of stuff, and there are things you don't need to be trained on, like litter pickup, things of that, that could be really useful.
Yeah.
And I think those comments really go back to that whole concept of role clarity. So, what is it that you are signing up for when you sign up for the festival commission? So, making sure that people really are aware that, you know, you're signing up to volunteer, at least in part, you get to plan festivals as well, but there is that volunteer component to it, to actually go and make the festivals happen. Anyone else on term limits?
See no lights?
All right, so this final one, I think we'll probably have more conversation on than the others. This is about looking at council's role related to boards and commissions, and how much, whether we have council members as voting members on our boards and commissions, and how much participation council has in those meetings. So, what ICMA recommends is that they have elected officials step back a little bit, and allow the passion and innovation from these citizen voices to really come forward, giving them the opportunity to express themselves more. So, I know we've talked about this a little bit in the context, I tell this story every time I bring a new council member on board, but it's interesting to me how, once you have a certain title, your voice then has this outsized impact in how people hear it. So, one of the examples I always give is that when I first became the city attorney, I was sitting down with some of my staff, and we were planning our staff meeting, and I kind of made what I thought was a rhetorical comment about our staff meeting agenda, and then, two weeks later, I got an invite to a meeting to talk about the new staff meeting agenda, and they spent all this time recreating the staff agenda, and I'm like, "Ah, I did not intend for it to have that effect, but because I was the city attorney, people took what I said differently than the way that I really intended to, for it to be," and it had more of an impact than I intended for it to have. And so, that's what ICMA is really trying to say, is that when people have a whole lot of respect for you as elected officials, they chose you to represent their voices at that local government level, and so, when you have something to say, it's really important to them. So, on these boards and commissions, when we have council members there, if you say something, people are going to take that as, you know, this is what the council wants. And so, that's really what ICMA is trying to, trying to help empower citizen voices a little bit more by advocating for different sorts of council involvement in boards and commissions. So, our current practice is, we do have some council members as voting members on our advisory committees, we set it up that way, it's very clear that that was what was intended when they were set up. In terms of the practices in other cities, there were, out of the 10 cities we looked at, five don't have sitting council members as voting members on their advisory boards and commissions, and they deal, tend to deal with boards and commissions more as a body, as opposed to, like, more in the joint work session format, as opposed to having individual council members attend meetings. There were four cities that use more of a council liaison system, so we'll talk a little bit more in detail about that, because I want to make sure we're all on the same page as that, but they're not voting members, and they don't always attend meetings, and definitely don't participate in those meetings. There was one other city that adopts the same practice that we have right now, they do have voting council members on their advisory boards, those council members do participate pretty actively in those meetings. So, in terms of the council feedback on the survey, there was a little, there were some split views on this. There was general recommendation of ICMA's best practice, that, you know, maybe we shouldn't have council members as voting members, and we can look at kind of deviating from that practice. Some of the benefits that council members offered as having council members at these meetings was being able to provide real-time communication with these committees and boards, being able to provide guidance from council, from a council perspective, and create more alignment with council priorities. Some of the concerns noticed about continuing with our current practice would be, again, what we had just talked about, that maybe unintentionally, the presence of a council member might change the course of a discussion. And then, some of the guidelines that were suggested by various members of council on if we do have council member attend these meetings, being careful to not steer the discussion, or take a leadership position in what happens during those discussions, and mainly sharing updates and answer questions and things like that, allowing the board to deliberate independently. So, from council's feedback, it looks like we probably, a good middle ground for us would be maybe moving towards a little bit of a council liaison system, and before we move on and start doing some work in that regard, I want to make sure we are all on the same page about what that means. So, that is the next thing we're going to talk about. So, in the memo that was-
Quickly, Councilmember Ambrose.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
In the memo that was in the packet that you had received before the survey, I highlighted the system that Fort Collins has in place. So, they have what they call a council liaison system, and it functions really like a mentoring role. There is a council member that is appointed to each board and, advisory board and commission, and that council member acts as the communication link between council and that board and commission. They really provide some of that mentoring and coaching for the chair, maybe on, you know, on occasion. They answer questions that the board and commission has, they lead the application review for that particular board and commission, participate in interviews, and then they also help review the annual work plan, maybe before it goes before the entire council. So, does that sound like something that this council would be interested in? This is one of the things that I'd love to hear more from you on.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, I, I think this would be great to move to this system, but especially with the other things that you've talked about, with the standardized reporting and alignment with council strategy objectives, because council should be functioning as a body, and as a decision-making body, and so, when you have council members who are there individually voting, they may not recall quite, you know, the perspective of council as a body, and then, if we have more of this liaison system, then it allows boards and commissions that I'm not on, that I will be able to, you know, or the rest of us as a body will be able to interact with that board and commission, which is what its intended purpose is. It's not supposed to be like a pet project of one council member to advocate for this committee that they're voting on to get more resources than other committees. It's supposed to be us as a body being able to hear, what's the report, what's going well with this board and commission, what do they need help on, how are they aligned with us strategically, and what have we made decisions as, as a body, and that kind of interaction, and then, making sure that when you're at a meeting as a council member, that you're there to kind of explain what council as a body. And I can, you know, most recently called this on the Housing Advisory Committee, when the Housing Advisory Committee was like, "Why is the city suing the state over these things that would make housing more affordable that we are already, you know, doing?" And so, being there to explain, like, this is what council is thinking, and I think what you can give input on is about, like, whether you think that's a good idea for council to continue to do this or not, or where you can see, because housing does have so many different policies, we don't have time for every single member on council to become an affordable housing expert. That's why we have the Housing Advisory Committee to be able to do that kind of work and make those recommendations. So, I think that this will work if we have the very strong reporting and alignment with strategy. I don't think, because I think what was the intention to have a council member as a voting member was to provide, you know, the strategic alignment and the report back, and, you know, to kind of serve, like, Councilmember Pfeiffer's point, like, it becomes a lot on that council member to be impartial, but yet still direct towards the strategic alignment of council. So, I think increasing visibility from this council as a body to the boards and commissions through the reporting and the strategic alignment, then would make it easier for this role to become more of a liaison, liaison role.
Exactly. I think, you know, all the benefits that council identified of having a council member sit on a committee, I think we can provide, but in different formats. And so, I think that's what you were, you were just saying. Anyone else?
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
So, just so I'm clear on this liaison, it's just basically for the, like, I can envision it for the chair to contact me if they, if I was assigned to that committee to help answer any questions, but I do agree that being in the room, even that alone can sometimes persuade the conversation. I like the fact of a liaison, that they can dial a friend, the chair can, especially if we go, like, like, Councilmember Ambrose said, if we can have the structure, alignment with strategic plan, have a work plan, it's all been reviewed as a governing body, and we all, and everyone knows to march forward on that, then assigning the liaison is perfectly fine, and we as council members don't have to go to every meeting. And in fact, I'd probably discourage us to go to those meetings, because we should be operating as an efficient body by then, and they should as well. Because, I just want to highlight a few things that, over my years of experience, it's hard for us council members to not weigh in sometimes, because you can see the, the commission or the board start drifting so far away from our strategic plan, or what we've already agreed on, and they're doing something that is possibly wasting staff's time, that you're like, "Ooh, hit the guardrail, let me pull you back in on that one," because I don't think where you're going, council's going to support where this is going. And so, we are influencing that conversation, but if the work plan's in place, and all these strategic alignments are there, this should be an easy conversation, and especially if, if they want more and more feedback from us, if they're more organized like that, then we have the workshops or whatever, and we're as a governing body, we'll have a better interaction with them, and they'll feel more valued as well, and, and it goes back to building leadership capacity. You know, at the end of the day, you can see the domino facts. So, I, I like going to this, because I was starting to get worried about how much time we divvy up on these boards. I also don't like the fact that a council member is voting on a different board. It's kind of like back in the day when there was a council member on the planning commission, I think, was that Board of Adjustments? No. But, it was on Planning Commission. There was a voting council member on-
I think that's accurate.
-the Planning Commission for decades.
Yeah.
And they would know more about something, and then come back and vote on it again later. So, it's kind of like that's happening, too, on these boards, so I'd rather have no voting by any council member, and, and just have this liaison set up, because I think the voting is kind of like, if, however it comes back in front of us again, I think it creates a weird environment that, say, you know, I'm going to pick Randy for right now, but say Randy voted on something, and it came back here for us to all vote, but Randy already knew everything and already voted, he already shared his opinion, and he already made a decision.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know what took place for him to get there. So, I would try to remove that right away on voting, from all of our commissions and stuff, and boards.
All right. All right. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon, it's your turn. You may pick on Mr. Pfeiffer now.
No, I, I will agree with him on the voting. And I was very surprised in reading your report that actually I'm supposed to be voting on ASAC, and I haven't been. So, and so I'll, I'll just speak from that experience in that I definitely think the liaison role is the right way to go. I think something that, that I would like us to consider though, and, and that I have found beneficial, because I viewed it as a liaison role and not a voting role, is that, you know, in our agenda every month, and, and again, to, to Councilmember Ambrose's point, if, if we have a better structure in place and better check-ins, and it may not need to be every month, but I think there's some benefit to having us present at the beginning of the meeting, which is what happens in, in our agenda and ASAC, is that there's a, a staff liaison report and then the council liaison report. And so it's an opportunity for me to say, hey, this is what's going on in council. We just did this workshop, you should go check it out. I think it's very related to what you guys are discussing. And, and this is coming up. We're going to be doing our budget, and I think you should be also interested in this. And so calling those kind of things out at a timely manner, I think, is appropriate, and, and because they are busy people and they're not watching all of those things. But yet it's very important to the work they're doing as a body. And so I think that is a good opportunity. And then I think the other piece is important is to allow them to ask me questions, you know? And so we've had some good interchanges about, hey, we're working on the sustainability advisor, uh, the, sorry, the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, and, you know, we're, we're wondering about these pieces and how council is going to, to look at this. And I will say, well, council's going to ask these questions, and so keep this in mind. And so I think that has been beneficial to have that dialogue. And so maybe what I would suggest us to consider is a little bit of a hybrid in that it doesn't need to be every monthly meeting, but having maybe a quarterly time for council members to go and to be able to have that interchange with the full, not just the chair, but the full committee to say, these are things coming up that you should be aware of, do you have questions for me? What are the things you're working on that you want to ask me as your representative from council, so that I can, you know, help advise you on that, or bring back to council? And they say, hey, we've got this question, that's a great question, let me go back to council. So I think having more of that, and, and along with the, you know, the work plan development may be a, a way to go, but I, my preference would be to not completely cut council out. And, and, you know, to the concern about the influence piece, then, you know, we could say that, that the time that the council members there at the meeting is for that set agenda item, and then they leave. So, and so at least having that opportunity to have that interaction, to get the questions answered and addressed, and communication needs to happen, and so that they can see that as our role as the liaison, and we have that relationship, and if they need to contact us or whatever, we have that relationship. But that, that would be my suggestion.
Okay. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm looking, and I know this is not the end-all, be-all, I'm looking at munidocs. Very exciting. So according to the bylaws for, for, for our Sustainability Advisory Committee, it says that you should have two council members on your committee. And then I go to other ones, and there's no council members on the committees. So I'm hoping that going through some of this process, that we make our bylaws a little more congruous and have some continuity of the sections, term limits, succession planning, absences, council members, yes or no, because it's, even, even the way that they're set up, it's different. Now, some of it's name, purpose, and duties, and this one's name, purpose, and membership. It's just not very consistent, so it can be very confusing.
Absolutely. This is one of the top priority things for us, is to make it the same across the board, to have maybe some ordinances that, that lay out some of the big things, like term limits and annual election of officers and things like that, and then to have a set of bylaws that they all adopt, all the advisory committees adopt. So even when you as council members might hop from committee to committee, you know that the process is the same, and that the expectations are the same across the board, so that we can, we can be very streamlined in that sense.
Right. Because I'm looking at the hack, and according to the Housing Advisory Committee, there, there is no council member.
They've changed.
Well, this says from 2020 to-
Because we created a seat for a council member.
Well, then what's locked, like I said, munidocs- Munidocs doesn't have it all, but if I were looking at it from the outside, this is what I'm seeing.
Right. It's confusing.
So, yeah, so it's very confusing. So if we're going to do this, we could either take the docs and put them on our site, and take them off of munidocs. I don't know how you want to do that. But yeah, I think that if we could at least make the template the same, and then definitely maybe under members, membership part, would have a city council member. Yes, no. Yes is a non-voting member, something like that.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Marriott.
Yeah, so I think this is kind of the important part of your whole discussion, and here's what I would have to say about it. I think there's, the different committees act differently. But my concern is, we have several boards or commissions that are just glorified political action committees. And at times, different council members have used them as their tool to, to press public policy that they, that they favor. And I, I find that to be not useful. I think that's a bad way for, for this to happen. And I think also in the, you know, when you get to the public square part of deciding on legislation, it's a terrible way to legislate. I think some of the committees, like the Festivals Commission, actually does something, and I, I wouldn't classify them as that. And so I think a council member's role there might be different. But the Sustainability Advisory Committee, you know, was focused on passing certain public policy, and they were a tool that was used to do that and continue to be to today. The Housing Advisory Committee, another thing that's kind of presses a, a political solution from one, from one perspective, and, and then there's no counter perspective. And so where I think it's troubling is, you've got a city-sponsored political action committee that presses one point of view, and then a council member or members who use that to, to press their personal legislative desires. And I would like to see something, you know, going forward where you, you maybe can't ever completely break that down, but where that gets broken up a little bit. You know, I think, I think that's, I think people view that as not a good way to operate. And we've got a couple of them that do that, and I think we ought to figure out how that doesn't happen. And maybe it's the council doesn't have any role in those at all, or the liaison role for council is that they're a resource that can be called upon if the committee wants, but they're not there to direct the committee what to do, or to help the committee strategize for, here's how you get your legislative desires passed, you know, those, those types of things. Some of the other boards and commissions, like the Building Code Advisory Board, doesn't really have that political component, so, and doesn't really need a council liaison. But the ones that need the council liaison tend to be the ones that have that, that, you know, that political desire to pass certain political legislation over another. And, you know, in my, in my view, the council should have a reduced role there, not a greater role.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I don't think I'm on.
I just, I just turned you off, so you were on.
I completely forgot when you turned it off.
It's okay. It's okay.
Okay.
I, yeah. He is, he is new here. He's still, he's still-
Still pulling out the survey. I'm still on the survey part. Hold on. I didn't get to, I didn't finish this part of the survey.
It's okay. You know what? We've got council member training coming up in two months.
Right?
Mr. Pfeiffer can go again. I echo the comments of our, of my colleagues. I agree with the council liaison role. I really like the idea of being able to come early, give sort of a, here's what's happening at council, do you have any sort of questions, but then leave. I, I agree entirely with the best practice recommendation. We do stifle conversation just by being in the room. I've seen it myself, just by virtue of our presence, even when we're not doing anything. You know, people will look to you, or they'll be like, well, what do you think? They, they just defer to us naturally. So I think in the interest of organic conversation, brainstorming ideas, sometimes it's better when we're not around.
And it, it does save, it saves your time for the, the things that we really need you to weigh in on. So those, those high-level policy issues, you know, if you don't have to attend an entire meeting, you can spend more time doing one of the many, many tasks that you have to do as a council member to weigh in on some, some of those other issues as well.
Yeah. And it's empowering for our boards. We appoint them for a reason. We trust them. So I, I appreciate giving them that opportunity.
Did you just press your light, Councilmember Pfeiffer?
I want to.
Are you done with your survey?
Well, no. Sorry, I was distracted by the conversation, so I wasn't finished. But the, the only thing with talking, the one thing that popped in my mind, and I don't know how to solve for this, and that's why I was teeter-tottering on asking this question, but I'll throw it out there. So even if we work with the, you know, the chair of that committee as their liaison, I worry about, you know, where the staff liaison might be misaligned in that conversation. So, you know, while I was teeter-tottering was because, you know, you might be coaching or talking to the chair, and the staffer does not know what's being said, and maybe the, maybe I'm misaligned, right? Or I didn't know a fact, or I missed that memo or something. And I'm, I'm misguiding that, that committee. And it's a little careful, because, you know, I don't want to direct staff either. You know, this is where I was starting to, that's why I was teeter-tottering, is, it's not that I was directing staff, but-
Yeah, it's a good point, and it's something that-
I don't know. It's just something we need to think through of how that continuity of communication stays solid, because you don't want the team, the city team and the committee kind of go apart because, not that I said anything wrong, and I, I don't, I've never seen this happen, but it, it could, or I've learned, like, I said something, and then, well, I don't have the newest information, and, you know, the team member comes in and gently kind of gets it on the right rails. And that's nice, but that's why it might be something that if we are with the, the chair, we may have to have the team member with us, just to make the three of us have a conversation. I don't know. We've got to think through that.
I agree. I, I think it'll involve some, really spending some time with the staff liaisons to empower them to do the things that they need to do. So like you were, I think one of you had mentioned, you know, wanting to kind of redirect conversation if it gets kind of out of the scope of what they're supposed to be doing. We really want to start encouraging, or, you know, continue to encourage our staff liaisons to feel like they can do that too. They understand what council's direction is, they understand what council's strategy is, and so they're able to provide that direction as well. And I think it will help empower them as well to, to step in and fill some of that role. But I, I hadn't thought of the issue that you brought up, in that if you're having separate, if a council member liaison is having separate conversations with the chair without the staff liaison, that could create a whole lot of confusion. So we'll think about that.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, bringing up the staff, I realized that, that they were not surveyed, staff members who were there who participate in it.
We, we've had a lot of conversations. I've had the conversations with the staff liaisons in person. So instead of doing a survey, we've had, I think, three meetings with the staff liaisons where we really led them through the process, trying to say, hey, what could we ma, how could we make this better? What do you need? What are your challenges? What are your obstacles? And how can we help you move forward in a more productive way? So a lot of the feedback that we got from the staff liaisons is incorporated into these recommendations, and is something that we've been talking about with them on a pretty regular basis.
Yeah, and I think to Councilmember Pfeiffer's point, like, having best practices for how the council member and the staff liaison can work well together would be good. Like, I know I met with staff before I came on to my committee, so I could be like, I don't want to, you know, push anything out there. We're not already aligned on with the strategic, you know, alignment and the different policies you're working on. I really want to understand your work and make sure that the, you know, this committee that we've appointed actually helps you, and is not like, okay, now I have to spend 10% of my job just managing the citizen committee, because that is not, you know, a good use of staff time. So I think making sure that that relationship is also, has best practices, and council members are trained on in the council liaison role is, would be great.
I like that idea. We'll definitely look into that.
Councilmember Davis.
What do staff think about us being involved in their meetings?
So I think it, it's helpful in some ways, but I think that it's generally, what we've noticed is exactly what, similar to the example that I gave you about my personal experience, is that it's, the board and commission members have a huge amount of respect for all of you, and so when you say something that has an impact that you may not intend for it to have. And so I, that's kind of that, that's part of that perspective. Not that it's not helpful in some ways, but it can make people respond differently, it can make the committee decisions come out differently.
Can I share?
Go ahead.
Can I share an experience? Because, you know, I've seen, also, I've been involved where I had to defend staff because the committee was turning on staff, and, and staff was right and aligned with council. So I see our role kind of gets a little weird, and, and so now I'm policing the committee because it, it's maybe dysfunctional, what's happening. So I just think we should be aware of that, because I know sometimes we, we have to do that, protect our staff as well, or just tough.
Understood.
And I know, I know my liaison's probably said, maybe get his surveys done on time is probably what they put on your survey.
All right. Any more feedback about the council liaison role?
I see no lights.
Okay. All right, so that's all I've got for you tonight. Thank you for giving all of that feedback. This is incredibly helpful to us. Is there anything else very generally about boards and commissions that you want us to keep in mind as we go through this improvement process?
The only one I have is, you know, I really like the idea, Councilmember Davis's idea of the standardization. I know the team's already working on that. Once we get this in a rhythm and going, I, I know we're always reticent to try and create new things, but we've had lots of discussions on this council in the past about, such as a youth commission or other things of that nature. So it'd be interesting in perhaps a year from now, once we've done this work, to standardize, to see if there is maybe anything new we want to create. Just to continue to advise us, where, where are the voices missing that should be heard? Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I remembered what I wanted to say that time when she turned off my light.
Oh, my goodness.
It took a while.
I called on you.
See what happens when you're an empty nester and you have nothing to do at the house? You just can't remember anything anymore. Bylaws. So one thing I noticed, and maybe I'm wrong, and you can correct me, but bylaws, I've only seen a couple of those, like, the housing one came up to us. But we should make sure that every committee's bylaw comes to us for approval. And I don't know if that's process or not, but maybe we need to see them all, because they are going to be a little bit different.
Sure.
And we want to make sure that they're set up. Yeah, it should be the same template, but I, I think they'll be different. Yeah, there'll be a little bit differences in them, but that, could we review each one of those? I mean, the ordinance can govern it, but then each of the bylaws, so when you standardize them, we can look at them all.
Talking about the purpose of the committee, things like that. We may, I keep going back and forth on this, but the way Fort Collins has their boards and committees ordinances set up, they have the purpose of each committee codified in their code, and it's all in the exact same space. And they also divide them up by the type of committee they are. So this is like totally nerd lawyer stuff, but I love it. I love how it's set up. And so if we did it that way, it would definitely come to council, because you would have to vote on the ordinance, and so you would have to approve the purpose statement of the committee that would be in the code. And then we could just copy and paste that into the bylaws and have council approve the template bylaws, so that you, you know what's in every one, because we've, you've had a part in deciding what the purpose is, and also what the individual procedural things will be.
And we should also make sure that, we should codify in there if there is to be a liaison or not. I think it was Mr. Marriott bringing that up, because I think, like, Human Services won, there's a reason why there's not one of us on there at all, is because we're divvying out money. You know, Festival Commission, we haven't either, because we don't want to influence the festivals types, you know? So I think we need to codify that as well, which one should have liaisons, which one should not, and-
That's a good idea.
-codify that as well.
Councilmember Davis.
Have we ever had a committee or a board where we've sunset, and I'm answering my own question, because we did GLAC, the Gold Line Advisory Committee?
We did that one. We have combined committees before, because the Gulf Advisory Committee was kind of subsumed by Parks Committee as well. So it does happen.
Sister Cities, we sunsetted as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I see no other lights. I will say, this has been tremendously fun. You lived up to the, the group that's been before.
Yay! Thank you. I appreciate your time, and we will be back. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Morris. All right. Mr. Wick, are there any staff updates this evening?
Y'all done.
All right, we are adjourned.